Once again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to call this special meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, October 11th, and the time is 6:37. Could we have our roll call, please?
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
President.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Corsick?
President.
Chairman Barnes?
Here.
Thank you. Now Commissioner Dejeanet has offered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of it. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda as is?
Thank you, motion from Commissioner Sims. Second?
And can I make a correction to the minutes?
The agenda.
Oh, the agenda.
Yeah. We need a second. Second from Commissioner Baker. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None, motion carries, the agenda is approved. And next up, the consent calendar. There is one item, that being the approval of the minutes from the meeting of August 23rd, 2018.
I would like to request a change under Planning Commission. It lists Joanne Stevens as chairman, and that, change that to Commissioner.
Alright.
Good catch.
In the roll call listing, it lists Commissioner Stevens as the chairman. Congratulations.
Yep. You got promoted.
One swipe.
Got promoted.
What do we call it?
Change it.
Promoted and demoted.
Yeah, you can just make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, alright. So, since you brought it up, you want to make a motion to approve as amended?
Yes, approval to change it as amended.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Baker. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, vote electronically. Apologize. One more.
Didn't go, I pushed it.
Chair Stevens.
Going?
Still waiting. Like you mean it.
I do mean it. It's not going, right? You're saying?
Alright, let's do a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No opposed. Motion carries, seven to zero. There we go, it worked. Finally, alright. Now we come to the public comments portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission on any matter other than either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items or public hearings, please fill out a request to speak form available at the door. Just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, and do we have any speakers on the list?
We have Rafael Brugeras.
We do, one speaker. Mr. Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I just wanted to bring a report, a praise report, as I call it. I've been riding around the city for a lot of miles in the last several weeks, and we're doing very well, because if you go throughout the whole entire city, you see construction on the roads, you see them building the corners for the handicap, you see businesses being built, you see houses being built, K&amp;B, the ones on Heacock, new roads, I'm taking what used to be dirt, what used to be dirt, we now have brand-new roads painted with lines yellow and white, and we have houses on them with plumbing and electricity, and people living in them right now. We have come a long ways. Are we done? No, because there's plenty of land in this city that needs to be developed. But I tell you, I've been driving around for miles and miles, and I see the progress of a yes vote, when we vote yes to make things happen in the city of Moreno Valley. People are glad to be living in the city of Moreno Valley. People are glad to be living under the M, because that's what we live, we live under the M. We show people that we have a miracle city. We need to continue. There's a lot of brand-new businesses, small ones, but on they street is growing well. And you know why I say that? Because we all live in Moreno Valley right here. Each and one of yous live in Moreno Valley, and each and one of yous go shopping on the weekends or during the week, and you see the progress. And that's what it's all about. Coming from different parts of the city, coming together to make a decision for the people in the city of Moreno Valley, and I'm always, always grateful when we get yes votes for the city of Moreno Valley. We're not done. We probably will never be done in our lifetime, but I hope there'll be someone else to take our place, because we need to finish Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Any other speakers on the list?
No, Chair.
Thank you. At this time, next on the agenda for other non-public hearing items, there are none. And then, apparently due to some technical issues which are too complicated to explain, we cannot start the public hearing until 7:00 PM. So, with that, let's take care of some other business. Pardon me? With that, how do we go about moving some of the other business forward?
You can just call those later items out of order.
Okay, alright. Mr. Harmio, do we have any staff comments that you'd like to add?
Yes, sir, Chair and Commissioners. I just thought I'd just very quickly update the commission about some of the projects that you'll be seeing. There's some really exciting things that are coming up on your, for meeting schedule the next three months through December. At the commission, there'll be some general plan amendments that involve changes to residential uses. There'll be a general plan amendment that changes, proposes to change a use to industrial use. There are plot plans, there are conditional use permits, and there'll be a tentative track map. So the agenda for the commission is going to be pretty full, you know, through the end of the year. Staff's also working on participating with Parks and Recreation and other city staff on the amphitheater project close by here, just the other side of the parking lot. That will be, the schedule is about, right, 2019, when they're starting the construction, 2019 when they want to. Also, the Nason Street, Phase Two, the corridor from Cottonwood South along the west side of Nason Street, on city-owned, primarily city-owned land. The studies proceeding, there've been stakeholder, our consultant group, Bramian Associates, has conducted stakeholder interviews. They have some preliminary reports out with us on the results of those interviews and some existing conditions noted, a report on that. We've had conversations with them this week. There's going to be a workshop, October 18th, at 6 o'clock in this chambers, that you're all invited to, of course. A public workshop and presentation by the consultant group and the staff. So, that's proceeding along, that's a several-month process into the future to investigate what might be the highest and best uses on those, on that property. I also wanted to announce that this is my last Planning Commission meeting. My last day at the city is tomorrow. I've served as interim for a little more than eight months. I've had the privilege of working with a great staff and a great commission, and I thank you for your help. Hope I, like I told staff today, I said I hope I haven't gotten in your way during the eight months to help where I could. And we have a new division manager hired, and she'll be starting on Monday, next Monday, the 15th. She is Patty Nevins. She has, just as a quick biography, she has more than 25 years of diversified planning experience. Excuse me, she most recently has been serving as a community development director for the city of Banning. She has served in the recent past as Chair of the WRCOG Planning Directors Technical Advisory Committee. She, prior to her work in Banning, she had extensive experience working with Southern California Edison, and prior to that, she had a career and positions, planning positions in the San Diego area and some of the desert communities. So we welcome her, she's going to be really busy hopping right in, and she'll be here Monday morning, starting. Those are the announcements I have for you, and thank you again for all your help. It's been a pleasure.
Well, thank you for your service. We are sorry to see you go and appreciate all your help. Any Planning Commissioner comments not relating to the case? Alright. Having none, let's take a 12-minute recess till 7:00 PM. Alright? So, with that, we are on recess. See you in 12 minutes. Alright, at this time, I'd like to reconvene the meeting, and we are at the point in the agenda for public hearing items, we have one case this evening. PEN 180023, a plot plan. PEN 18-0024, general plan amendment. PEN 18-0025, a change of zone. The applicant is Newcastle Partners. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Barnes, Seda Yagubian. Our contract planner will be presenting the staff report for you.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Seda Yagubian, and I am a contract case planner for this project. I just wanted to provide an update regarding the discussion of building height in the staff report. Due to the proximity of the site to the March Air Reserve Base, the project was reviewed by the Airport Land Use Commission, which has approved the project with conditions. At that time, the applicant submitted a building which was 41 feet tall. The final plans for the project included a maximum height of 45 feet at the highest point. The Airport Land Use Commission meeting will be considering the revised height at their November meeting. The 45-foot height allows for a better building design with more variation of the roof line. In addition, the 45-foot height is compatible with other buildings in the area, for example, the 300,000-plus-square-foot warehouse building to the west of this site closer to the base between Ellsworth and Veteran Way is 45 feet. The two warehouse buildings in close proximity to this building, Harbor Freight and Perlodges, are approximately 41 feet. Therefore, planning staff is recommending the 45-foot height contingent on the Airport Land Use Commission's review and approval at their November meeting. So with that, the item before you tonight is a general plan amendment. Is a general plan amendment and a change of zone and a plot plan, including certification of mitigated negative declaration and adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Center Point Commerce Center. The project was noticed to the properties within the 300-foot radius posted on the site and published in the newspaper. The project's site is 8.8 acres. 8.8 acres, and it is located at the northeast corner of Brodeia Avenue and Frederick Street intersection. The property has a general plan designation of office and is zoned office. In seeing the slide, the surrounding land uses include a vacant commercial land to the north with general plan and zoning designations of commercial, existing warehouse distribution uses to the immediate east, south, and the southwest of, southwest with general plan and zoning designations of business park, and existing office uses including the City Hall complex to the west. Applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the site from office to business park, and similarly, the zoning designation from office to business park to construct a 204,022-square-foot warehouse facility, including 10,000 square feet of office and mezzanine space. Landscaping is provided around the perimeter of the site and the building also, and in the parking areas in accordance with the municipal code, including trees and a variety of shrubs and accent plants, as well as a bioretention basin, which is going to be located along Brodeia frontage. Parking includes 109 auto spaces, 23 loading docks on the east side of the building. All of the shipping and receiving will be on that side of the building, so 23 loading docks and 27 truck-trailer parking spaces for shipping and receiving. And there will also be accessible stalls, parking stalls, clean air vehicles, and electrical charging stations, as well as bicycle racks. The architecture of the building is of contemporary design with 45-foot-high painted concrete tilt-up panels and low reflective blue glazed glass. The building facade articulations and decorative elements on the building include parapets, wall recesses, emollients, aluminum canopies, and stone veneer. The color palette is pretty neutral in shades, including white, tan, gray, and blue, and overall, the building will have a high-quality appearance and complementary to the surrounding architecture. In terms of the environmental analysis, T&amp;B Planning prepared the initial study pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Based on staff's independent review, staff concluded that a mitigated negative declaration would be the appropriate environmental determination. The environmental analysis found that mitigation measures would be necessary for biological, cultural, and tribal resources which have been incorporated in the project and are in addition to the conditions that will be included on the project. With that, staff is recommending, that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council certify the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, approve the general plan amendment, approve the change of zone, and approve the plot plan for Center Point Commerce Center, subject to conditions. And here, I need to also bring up that inadvertently, the conditions of approval from our fire department had not been included in the, in the document that you received. However, they are at the dais, and I believe you can see them, they are condition numbers 50 through 74, and so with your recommendation for approval of the plot plan with conditions, those conditions would be also part of the conditions of approval for the project. With that, that you might have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any Commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, so on the, can you, with the revised conditions, could you point us to where the ALUX conditions are?
13 to 19, I think. No.
There are, okay, here it is, okay.
11. 11, page 2 to, 2 to 4, 11 to 19, is that correct?
So, so how does that going to work? So, yeah, condition 17 is the same as what was in the packet. So how does that work? Where, if a yes goes through here for the project, it's conditioned with 41, so it is, I guess the language is, is... I didn't see the language that says, well, if we go to ALUX in November, you know, and we're going for 45, how does that score up? I guess, is there going to be a revised set of conditions prior to going to the city council? If we, if we give, if we give a either-or, 41 or 45?
Should we, should we just, if we make a motion, should we amend 17 to say 45 feet?
Well, that is an Airport Land Use Commission condition, so we wouldn't want to necessarily amend that condition. The, the project is designed to be a 45-foot maximum height. The reality is that with the varying parapet, it's really on average more of a 43-foot-high overall average. But I think the key thing is that it's scheduled to go to the Airport Land Use Commission in early November before it would go to city council. And based on input from their staff, would appear that likely that would be recommended for approval to their, their commission, and so we don't anticipate there probably going to be concerns. However, our thought is that if, if in fact, the commission required it to be 41, that it could still be brought forward to council, because you would have discussed the 41-foot height, as far as the, the building height already. So that, that would be our recommendation. So we don't think it would necessarily have to come back to Planning Commission.
I guess, all the conditions, even in these revised conditions out on dais today, indicate everything's 41-foot. The conditions say it's a 41-foot maximum height building. You're saying the plant, the building is designed for 45, we're going to ALUX for a revised set of plans at 45, and it appears that through staff conversation in ALUX, that they are going to approve that, potentially approve that. So, is the idea here, we approve it here with 41, and it's, and that if ALUX is, the airport guys say, yeah, we're good with 45, then you would put a revised set of conditions?
Well, well, right, the ALUX condition says 41, so, and we didn't modify that condition at all in this set from what you originally had, just to be clear about that. But the ALUX condition says 41, if it goes to the ALUX board and they're okay with 45, and it does get approved, they will provide a modified condition of approval to staff, which we would then replace with this condition and forward to the council as part of that review.
So, this commission doesn't need to do if, an if-then type thing?
Right.
If 41 or 45, it just goes as-is?
You're only being asked to approve the recommendation that's in front of you, which is 41.
Okay, my other question to staff is, is the general plan amendment, say, there's a limit, the city can only approve a certain amount of general plan amendments per year? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Have, I can't remember. Before, have we done, is this number what?
Well, they, they don't, aren't counted until they actually would go to city council, so we would be grouping together several general plan amendments which will go to council in late December. So, we would not be exceeding the overall four amendments per year.
I, just as a suggestion, it, maybe in the staff reports, you could include how many have been processed, or, you know, I guess we could just ask the question.
Well, it's not, it's not how many, it's not how many GPAs are done, it's how many GPA actions the city council makes. They can do 20 of them at one meeting, and that counts as one. That's what he's saying, they group them together. They take case A, case B, and case C, and they approve them all at one time, so that's one general plan amendment.
And it's further qualified by the elements, they're counted separately as well, so.
Yeah, Planning Commissioner, well, thank you for the clarity. I did not know that.
Dude. Alright.
I don't know if I like that additional information.
Paul, I have a question for you. Moving forward, you have no issue with the approval at 41 feet, and we don't have to make any acknowledgement of the change that ALUX will make, that's?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's mostly just advisory for you that there's this possibility out there of a, of a change, but the change would not require further, we, I don't believe it would require further.
No formal action of any kind, okay. Alright. Any other questions? I have one. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, couldn't we approve this at 45 feet contingent upon the ALUX approving it also at 45 feet? And if they don't approve it at 45 feet, have it revert to 41 feet? Could, could, is that possible?
Well, essentially, that, even though there may not be a condition that includes both of those provisions, that is in effect what is being proposed. So the elevations that you're reviewing and approving are as high as 45 feet, and, but there is the ALUX condition that mentions the 41. So if ALUX changes their condition, then 45 and the ALUX condition will match the height of the building that, that the commission approved. I think we're okay without it. I mean, obviously, the Planning Commission could choose to add another condition to further clarify, but it, I think we're covered.
I mean, we've, well, I guess we shouldn't deliberate at this point, we should just ask questions, right, Paul? Go ahead.
I was just wondering if Newcastle Partners, Inc., are, are they the owners of Center Port, Center Point Commerce Center?
They are the applicant for this project.
But do they own the whole, because it's, it's like a park, isn't it? I mean, that's...
There actually is no longer a specific plan called Center Point at one time, there was in this area, but I, it's, they're actually individually owned parcels, so it would be best for the applicant to answer that question.
Good evening, Commissioner Members. Jackson Smith, Newcastle Partners, we are the applicant. We do not currently own the property, it's still owned by the owner that's owned it for about five or six years, and once we have our entitlements, then we will purchase it from the current owner.
Thank you.
I had a question, based on the presentation. I thought you had said there were 23 truck spaces, but the report says 27. Did I miss here?
There are 23 loading docks and 27 truck-trailer parking spaces.
Okay, I did miss here, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Alright, hearing them, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm here available to answer any questions specifically about our development, our company. We are, again, a primarily an industrial development company focused in the island empire. Our plan would be, as I mentioned earlier, once we go through city council and receive approval, we would close and purchase the property from the current owner and move forward with our construction documents and try to construct that building. with our construction documents and try to construct that building as, as soon as we can. We would build it on a speculative basis and market it for lease or for sale to users as we're going through the process. I would expect we could be breaking ground probably third quarter of 2019, if all goes according to plan. And, you know, I would expect that once this building is up and running, there's somewhere between 75 and 100 employees, permanent employees. We would, during construction, it's probably 125 to 100, 175 construction temporary jobs for economic development in the city. And we're excited, you know, this is what we do, that's our primary business, and I'm looking forward to putting this project together in the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? Harris.
Do you have any prospective tenants for this property yet, or anybody that has shown an interest in?
No, it's a good question. It's a little early as we go through this process because we don't want to prematurely market something until we go through, you know. This is a process that we started just about a year ago, and so it takes us about that long to kind of, you know, do all the technical studies and work with staff over the last 12 months or so. And so once we get through that, and probably the first quarter, then we'll really ramp up the marketing and focus on, on users and things like that, but so not yet.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. I see two speakers in the queue.
Good evening, once again, commissioners, staff, residents, and I guess. Like I was mentioning earlier, we're finally taking some of our dirt and we're starting to develop projects, houses, businesses, large building commercials. So we're doing something finally. What's going to happen from time to time, we're going to make changes because companies are now wanting to build their offices where the warehouses are being built. They don't want to have two separate places to travel and make decisions when one can go from the office to the back and make the final decision. This is what this project is talking about, making that final decision. They're building it the way they want for a customer, okay? The customer's not here, not here yet until all approvals are done. That's the only way we do things, okay? Now, four feet, what is four feet? I brought my friend here, it's called a stick. Okay, here we go. This is four feet, guys. That's all it is, for the 41. What if I was 41 feet? If you have four feet, that's all it'd be, not even that. That's all it'd be, four feet. So don't make it look like it's a lot, it's only 48 inches, three feet plus 12, 48, that's it. That's all it is, okay? Not a big thing. I wish I had four more feet in my garage, I would put more Christmas stuff up there, but I don't, okay? That's the way it is. But if he knew that he could have done it from the beginning, he would have done it. But the good thing about Moreno Valley, we already have presidents of tall buildings. There's already one on Veterans that was painted a few months ago that we approved that paint job, right? There were sketches of that. That's a 45-foot building. It's already here. So, you know, all we're doing is building projects in our city. You know, it's not like New York City where they got skyscrapers. Good thing about our city that holds back from building skyscrapers, that we have March Reserve Base there, and they fly military planes out of that, and they need the height that we cannot block. So that's a good thing by keeping things down to 45 or smaller. So it's only four foot, guys, we're going to have these things come later, we're going to change plans, we're going to do that because we have an old plan in this city that needs to be revised. So it's going to take time, like I said earlier. We may never see it in our generation, but it'll be built with smart people at the, at the commission and smart people planning things. So let's approve this tonight, let's move everything forward. They still got to get another approval, okay? I'm going to, still get one more, we're not the final word, okay? The other commissioners have the final word. So, let's make it simple, simple for us and simple for them to get the 45-foot, get this project done, and let's move on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergers. I see no other speakers in the queue, is that correct? Would the applicant like to?
We have Jackson Smith.
That's it?
Jackson Smith is the other speaker.
He is the applicant.
He's the applicant, yeah. So would you like to make a rebuttal comment or additional comment? You're good? Okay. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing and deliberate. Any thoughts? Commissioner Stevens.
I don't see any problem with it because it's not really up to us whether or not those extra feet are going to be allowable. So I think if we do go through with it, it's something that is really not up to us. So I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, seems pretty inconsequential.
Right.
In the overall scheme of things. Any other comments? Guys on board with that, that move forward and let ALUX make that call? All right. Well, if we have no deliberation, then we should probably vote. Seems like a great project, it's in the right place, seems well done. I have no objections at all. Happy to have another piece developed, so it's good news. Somebody want to make a motion? Commissioner Korzak, go ahead.
Okay, I recommend that we approve resolution number 2018-43, 2018-44, 2018-45, and 2018-46.
You said you recommend it, but are you making a motion that we approve those?
Oh, I make, yes, exactly.
Just to be, just to make sure we're clear.
I'm making a motion.
We're not deliberating, you're actually making...
We're not delivering.
Okay, thank you.
Deliberate, thank you very much.
Do we have to acknowledge the revised conditions?
Should be as amended, per the plot plan, yes.
As amended.
With the conditions as amended.
With the conditions as amended.
All right. Is that okay, Paul? Very good. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Baker. Let's vote electronically. Mr. Stevens? Thank you, Ashley. All votes have been cast. Motion carries seven to zero. Project is approved. Thank you very much. Do we have a staff wrap-up?
Yes, Chair Barnes, staff will be taking this to the city council at a December meeting.
All right, very good. Any additional comments from staff?
No, sir. Staff has, the planning staff has nothing else to say.
Well, thank you again for your service and...
You're welcome.
Best of luck.
It was a privilege.
Whatever's next.
Thank you.
Any commissioner comments?
I do.
Commissioner Sims.
Yeah, so with this new information about the general plan amendments... Didn't we have a discussion earlier, that, earlier in the year, budget time or something like that, that there, there was going to be some, some planning to initiate a general plan review update?
Amendment, right?
Yeah, I thought there was, you know, you can cut the tail of the dog off an inch at a time, you got a short tail on the dog, but it's painful every time, so...
Whatever that means.
Chair and commissioners, that, the comprehensive general plan update has been tabled for now, it was anticipated, but it's, it may be pursued at a near date. It's, that could happen.
May we ask why it was tabled?
I, that was before my time was here, I don't really know the why.
Was tabled before you got here?
Yeah, the, two weeks before.
Really?
Yeah, two or three weeks.
It's been tabled for eight months and we didn't know it?
That's correct. Just put in advance, actually, the, I think the council, my understanding is the council wanted to initiate a visioning process. To the incipient stages would be visioning. So, once that occurs, I think that, you know, who knows, there's a chance it could proceed, but I understand what you're saying, Mr. Sims, about...
I need a shot.
Yeah, could be, there's a...
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I answered my...
All right, any other comments, commissioners? Well, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned until the... Yeah, we are adjourned until the regularly scheduled meeting of October 25th at 7:00 PM in these chambers. Thank you, everyone, for your time and service.